Good evening, everybody. Time is 7:01. Motion and a second to open regular business.
Let's begin.
Second.
Kathy, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll open with the pledge of allegiance. Dani, if you could open something for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
On the number.
Kathy and Judy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to presentations. We'll open up with our student board representatives. We have Anaya Green and Emma Farr.
Good evening. My name is Emma Farr. I am the junior representative. Good evening. My name is Emma Farr and I am the junior representative. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the board. DECA had a holiday party on December 20th. Special thanks to Mrs. Liberati, Ms. Miletto, and the rec center for hosting. The parade for the PJHS Football New York State Champions was on December 29th, which ended with a fireworks celebration at East Main Elementary. January's Character Ed trade color of the month are Forgiveness and Pink. Yearbook Club photos took place Wednesday, the 8th. The DECA club attended their regional competition on the 8th at SUNY Rockland. Midterm exams are taking place January 7th through 28th. Regions exams and midterms will be January 21st to 24th. CTEC will be in session throughout Regions Week. Busing will be provided to students for CTEC and for students taking Regions exams. Vex Robotics will be competing this Saturday, January 18th, in Fallsburg.
Hello, my name's Anaya Green. I am the senior representative and thank you for the opportunity to serve on the board. The annual ADAC Winter Egoology trip to the SUNY ESF Newcomb Campus is next week, January 21st, and they will return January 25th. The second marking period ends January 24th. Report cards are scheduled to be distributed January 21st. Five of our musicians will participate in the All County Music Festival at Cornwall High School on Friday, 24th, January 24th and 25th. And on Friday, January 31st, 10 musicians will be going to Marywood for the Senior Win Band Celebration. We will resume regular instruction as we resume with the third marking period, beginning on January 27th. Senior scholarship packets have been distributed and will be accepted throughout, through February 3rd. Beginning in February, the Character Ed trade color will be orange to help show our respect to our fellow staff and students. The high school will be meeting with Dr. John Bell for our student advisory meeting later this month. There will be no school on January 20th to honor Martin Luther King Junior Day. Sophomore Information Night will be taking place February 6th at 6:00 PM and will be discussing important happenings for the year, including CTEC. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next up, we have presentations by principals Brett Kane-Creedy from EME. I think his name's HBE, I'm sorry, excuse me. It's the elementary building principals presentation.
All right, good evening. So nice to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and present to you guys. We have the incredible elementary team. You guys good?
Yep.
You good?
I couldn't read.
Put my name on or something? It just started, but I didn't.
I couldn't even tell you already.
But no, thank you for tonight. I hope you guys had a great holiday season. Lot of great things going on at the elementary schools. We're going to touch on a few things tonight. Couple of things that you're going to hear about tonight. Our new reading series from Hoden Mifflin-Hodencourt is called Inter Reading. Emily and I are going to talk a little bit about that. You're going to hear about our PBIS incentive programs that were at both buildings. And then, we have a little surprise at the end about our little vending machines that we are going to hopefully get in the next few weeks. So again, very excited to be here and present tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Emily and she's going to talk a little bit about the reading series and our process for how we chose that. So Emily?
Thank you. Thank you again for having us. It's so exciting to be here. This was a very long process that we embarked on. It started last school year. Natasha put together a K-12 committee that met to discuss the strengths and the weaknesses of our current reading program. So at the very end of all of those meetings, we asked our teachers on the committee to come up, to make some suggestions on programs that we should look into. So we came up with a list of nine resources that were recommended by the elementary committee members to take a look at. From there, Brett and I polled our colleagues throughout Orange County, as well as neighboring districts like DV and some in Sullivan County like Monticello, to find out what people were using around the county, what reading series were they using. We were able to narrow it down to three resources that were being used. And we had some initial sales pitches from some of the companies, but as with all sales pitches, they come with a dog and pony show and they want to sell you. And some sales pitches are great and some aren't. So we thought the best way to really get in to see the programs was to take our teachers and go around to see the programs in action, to go into the districts. So in November and December, we went on visits to Goshen to see Scholastic Literacy. We went to Minnesick Valley to see Amplify, which is also formerly known as CKLA. And we went to Ellenville to see the Inter Reading program. This was an invaluable process because our teachers could sit down, they could look at all of the materials, not just what was in the sales pitch. They could look at the materials, they could touch the materials, they could read them. And then they got to sit with other teachers and they were able to talk with them. They were able to ask questions. They were able to say, okay, what do you like, what do you not like? And they were able to really get real world feedback. It was such a great process. So from there, we arranged to have all of the people that were on the visits. We took our GLCs, we took AIS teachers, we took our literacy coach. All said and done, we had 23 members on this committee that did the site visits. We brought them all back together and had a big meeting together. We asked all of the teachers to take the list of pros and cons for each of the programs. And they did, they discussed. We had anchor charts around the room showing the pros and cons. And then at the end, we asked the group to vote, thinking about the feedback from their colleagues back at the buildings, to vote, what program do they want to go into? And Inter Reading was chosen almost unanimously. It was over 90% vote for Inter Reading. So we're so excited to not only be embarking on a new program, but also to have almost all of our teachers who represented in agreement from both buildings. So that, next year when we have this presentation, you'll be able to hear how we've rolled it out and what's going on in the classrooms. But for now, just to give you an introduction of where we went to choose the program. And so you'll hear a lot more about Inter Reading as we start that actual training process and getting the materials. So I'm going to turn it over now to East Main.
Thank you. So just real quick too about the reading process. I definitely want to thank our teachers from both buildings because again, the work that Emily described, you never really know what's going to happen when you go into these kind of things. And especially when you get them all in a room and they have to kind of like fight it out. And to have over 90%, you know, consensus with choosing a program, we didn't expect that. We thought it was going to be more like 60/40. It was just phenomenal. And just like the dedication that the teacher showed was great. So it was really just a great program. And again, as you know, like I've, you know, I've been the principal for a long time and the goal has always been to try to mesh the two buildings together. And for us to be able to finally do that and bring in a resource, especially a reading resource, where now both buildings will have it at the same time, they'll learn it the same way. And so now, we have students that are going back and forth between the buildings. They're going to have the same education, the same instruction. So it was just really a great, a great process and just glad to be a part of it. Really looking forward to our next step. So I just wanted to add that as well. All right, now, what's going on at East Main? Eh, not too much, you know, it's pretty boring over there. But no, again, great stuff. We're learning the building every single day. Obviously, new school, new challenges. We're going to talk a little bit about what those challenges are, how we kind of overcome some of those challenges and, you know, obviously what we're doing, you know, to make the building a home. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Sadie. She's going to talk a little bit about how we, you know, some of the procedures. And starting with the guiding coalition.
Good evening. Thank you again for having us. So we're in our new space now. Prior to getting there, we had a lot to figure out. So we knew that we needed all new procedures for a new building, but also going from a K6 building to a K5 building also led to some of those changes. So when we were thinking about how to go about this, we knew we wanted it to be a collective effort. We wanted input from our staff. We wanted to hear different voices. So it was decided that we would hold a guiding coalition. So this is the official definition for you, but really what this looked like for us was that our staff was invited to join us for this guiding coalition, which took place over two days in August. We were lucky enough to have such support with that. We had over 30 people that came to join us for those two days from all various roles. Teachers aides, special education teachers, our core team, our office staff. It was, everybody was represented in that group. We came together to really discuss and unpack some big topics that we needed to sort through and figure out, what are these things going to look like at East Main? So these are the big ideas that we brought to the table. We put together this list of topics. These were really our non-dogable. So other things may have come out of the meeting, but we knew that at the end of the two days, we needed to know what this was going to look like. So half of the topics were discussed the first day and half the second day. And these days were so productive, so successful. And we're so thankful to the staff that took the time out of their summer to join us because they were such a huge part of this work and it really made a big difference. I know for myself, when we walked away from those two days, I was like, okay, we can do this. Because these are, these are big things when you're talking about a school of, you know, 700-plus students. So I wanted to highlight some of the changes that have occurred as a result of our transitions at East Main. Just some examples, I'm not going to speak to each one, but for arrival and dismissal, we changed the way that the buses park, the manner in which we unloaded and hold buses, how we handle students who are drop-offs, that traffic flow. All of that had to be, had to be figured out. So we have made some minor tweaks as time has gone on, but for the most part, things are running as we anticipated. So certainly in time, you know, as things change, we'll change with them. But for the most part, we were able to go forward. So another example is staff duty assignments. At arrival and dismissal, we looked carefully at the map of our school and identified areas where we were going to need coverage inside and outside of the building. Our master schedule also looks different. Not because we're at a different school, but that's one of the impacts of going from a K6 school to a K5 school. It left us with a period in the day that was allocated for sixth grade to have special. And we no longer needed that. So it was determined that the best way to disperse that time was to add that into all of the other periods, making them longer, which really benefited us. It gives time for more uninterrupted instruction time. And it's also great for our special area teachers because they're only seeing the students once a week and now they have extra minutes with them for projects and lessons that they want to do. So that has been very beneficial. And we also moved to a model where we have three lunch periods in our day as opposed to four because we don't have sixth grade anymore. So when, another example is emergency drills. And when we were discussing this at the guiding coalition, we knew we needed to determine new exit routes for every room in the school, a new meeting place outside, and how we would re-enter in a calm manner once everything was done. So that's a condensed version of some of the changes. Obviously, you know, setting procedures for every new building is quite a feat. So those are just a couple of the examples of scheduling and procedural changes that we put into place now that we're at East Main. And to talk to you about some of the changes that we made to our incentive programs will be Mr. Gennaro. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to be talking about the incentives that we have at East Main. You guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I'm a little cloudy, so I'm nervous a little bit. So some of the incentives is that we had to change our logo. We were obviously ASK and now we had to change our logo to East Main. We also had to change our slogan to "Poor Pride Starts Here." It used to be "Doing Things the Right Way." With that, we actually had to change a lot of different things that were connected to that. So with our incentives that we had, kids actually get a certificate. And basically, it used to be, now it's called the Poor Pride Award. And the way it works is that a kid is doing the right thing around the building, anywhere. It could be in the cafeteria, the hallway, classrooms. Any, any adult could actually write a Good, a Poor Pride Award and give it to the kids. Then we announced it over the loudspeaker. They're put into a drawing. And on Friday, we give them some kind of, we call it our swag. So we have different things, we have different items. We have actually a lot of really cool stuff this year to kind of get the kids all hyped up, which is really, really a lot of fun to watch them get their stuff and they're really pumped for doing all this great stuff that they do. Also, we have our Characters of the Month. And this month is Forgiveness. So we have kind of different activities and different things that kind of go around that. We put some kind of display on the board in the middle of the lobby. So which is finally up, which is pretty exciting. And there's also bucket fillers that go along. I'm sorry. I almost forgot where I was. With the Characters of the Month, there's also bucket fillers that go with it. So there's a bucket filler for the younger grades and there's stand-uppers. So if they're in the classroom and a teacher sees them showing this characteristic, they get some kind of reward at the end of the month as well. That kind of goes, that brings it all together with whatever the characteristic of that month is. And we also have the Bus of the Month, which is really kind of cool this year. So we have a lot of ticket, we have tickets that the kids, that the bus drivers give to the kids for behaving on the bus. And what comes along with that is that they get a picture that's actually posted on one of the, it's like a mailbox that they drop their tickets in. And it's actually now that we have a really cool TV in the middle of our lobby, it's placed up there, displays, everybody sees that like, hey, this month's bus T won the Bus of the Month, which is pretty awesome. And then they also get a little reward so they can go to the cafeteria, hand in a little ticket, and have ice cream or some kind of cookies or whatever we decide for that month. And then we also have the Attendance Matters. This is kids who come to school markedly and they get a certificate at the end monthly. And they get some kind of like, it's kind of like a little badge that kind of they can walk around with, they can put on their backpack. It's kind of like free advertisement, actually. So if you think about it. And also the core team. For the kids who weren't coming together and not coming to school as much, we kind of meet on them, try to get, try to get some different activities, different ways to get them to come to school more often, which after a two-week break has been a bit of a challenge for us. So. And these are some of the pictures of all the cool things that we have. So in the middle is our swag. It's pretty cool stuff there. Different kids, we actually just got a rule in this one. So all the three kids, you see with the different items that they got. On the top corner, that is the bucket fillers. On the bottom, the bottom left, you'll see the, that is the Bus of the Month. And on the right, on the right corner, those are the certificates that we've displayed in our cafeteria. So I'm going to turn it over to HBE and I'll tell you about the incentives.
Okay, so we wanted to talk about some of the things that we have this year that are either new or refreshed or revamped for this school year. So something we started this year, we're super excited about, is we have a reading lab. And what that is, we thought, you know, what's the difference between some kids coming from home and other kids as far as reading and people reading to them at home? So we decided to take the room that we use for professional development and turn it also into what we call the Reading Lab. And I thought, how do we staff this? I can't take people out of their classrooms. I can't take people who have duties. So I thought, we have an untapped potential in our retirees. So I started putting out feelers through the retired network and I have retired teachers, I have some retired aides. I have volunteers that come in, some of our fifth grade and fourth grade students, and they read every week on Tuesday and Thursday to our students for interim blocks of 20 minutes. And the only requirement to read in this classroom, in this room, is that you just have to enjoy a book with a child. You don't have to talk about it. You don't have to teach them anything. All you have to do is sit with a child and read a book. Mr. Harris is going to be joining us soon to volunteer to read. So I put that out for anybody who's interested in coming in and just enjoy a book with a child. The kids love it. They get so excited. They color a little star for every book they read. If they read 20 books, then they get to turn in it and get a book that they get to take home. So it's really been a nice addition to the school. The retirees that come in absolutely love it. You know, they're retired from the profession. They don't want to come in and sub. They don't want to have to work for the day, but they want to keep a little, a little hold on what they did for their career. So they come in, they love it. And then we have a little coffee pot in the room so that they can sit and catch up and chat for a little bit before they go about their retired day. So it's awesome, we're so excited with it. And it's really been a hit. So that invitation is open to anybody that would like to come and spend some time up there reading with us. Some new revamped spaces we have. When we took in the classrooms during the construction project, we had to take some of our spaces and turn them into classrooms. So this year, with everybody having their own space, we were able to open back up our kin lab. We were able to open back up a larger mindfulness room. We created a rehearsal suite for our band and chorus. They had always been on the stage, but we ran into problems wanting to have our students now eating breakfast in the cafeteria because we can't have breakfast happening while the kids are trying to practice band. It was a problem at the end of the day with dismissal because if they were practicing for band and we're trying to line up the kids for dismissal, we were all trying to clamor over the same space. So we were able to take our music room, we turned that into a band and chorus rehearsal suite. And then Mr. Carlosi now has a music classroom, which freed up the stage space. So we had Mrs. Hulse who comes in for ADAC and she does lessons with our kids weekly. So we decided to take the stage that was now not being used during the day and Mrs. Hulse uses that as her space. So the kids are really excited to have a space to go meet with Mrs. Hulse because they go up the secret door that's to the back. They never knew what was up there. Now they're behind the curtain, they're all excited, they have a space. They do lessons with Mrs. Hulse and then they go back to their rooms. So it's been nice to be able to have people in more designated spaces. We've also started doing breakfast in the cafeteria this year for grades one through five. The great part about this is when we were packing breakfast and taking it to the classroom, your options are limited. It's cereal, it's a muffin or a granola bar. Now that they're going through the serving line getting breakfast, they're having smoothies, yogurt parfaits, hot breakfast, cold breakfast. I mean, it is like the greatest breakfast spread that you could ever see. So the kids are eating, they love going to breakfast. I think, Aaron, we're like a 90% getting breakfast. The kids love going in there, they can mix their tables, they sit with their siblings, they sit with their friends. And then they have a nice breakfast and then they go off to class. So that's been nice to be able to do that this year. The next three things are district-wide. So we decided this year to try one-to-one devices with iPads. And we're doing that in our UPK through second grade classrooms. They all have a one-to-one iPad. They stay in school, but during the day, that's what, instead of using Chromebooks, they're using iPads. We refreshed our PLC. We're going back to our professional learning communities that we've always done on Wednesdays. Now, what we started to do is extend PLC Wednesdays for a grade level at a time. It works out to each grade level, gets it extended. They get a full hour every six weeks. Gives them just more time for planning, more time for data work. The very first time we did this was all looking at state test data and analyzing. And so it's very helpful, just, it doesn't, it's not that much more time, but those 20 minutes make a big difference when you're in those good, rich discussions. And lastly, we are bringing back seven habits. So we started training all of our staff. They were trained the first part in November on applying the seven habits to themselves. At our next conference day in February, they will be trained on how to teach the seven habits so that by the time we're coming back to you next year to talk about this again, we'll be talking about how they're teaching the seven habits to our students. One other thing I wanted to mention, also with sixth grade moving to the middle school, we've now taken our band and chorus and opened that up to fourth grade. So now we have fourth and fifth grade band and chorus in both schools and then sixth grade is part of the band and chorus at the middle school. I am going to turn over to Justin, who's going to talk about our incentives.
So about a million years ago, I got to talk to you guys about the start of our PBIS initiative. And by 100 years ago, I mean last year. Sometimes it does feel that way. But we have continued to use B-bucks. At this point, the way we do that is if a student accumulates 10, they basically get a ticket to come to the office and they get access to our prize drawer. I had an interesting experience the other day with a young man who decided to be a saver and saved up 100 B-bucks and came in with 10 tickets. He rolled in pretty excited about rating our dum-dums on our prize drawer, so that was kind of fun to watch. We did add this year, we wanted a way of recognizing that kid who's being exemplary in the moment because the B-bucks are great, they add up, they're an immediate feedback. But we added a golden B-buck, which functions, one per teacher. Everyone has one. You can actually see my gear on the back of my badge. It's got my name on it. We give it to a kid who's really showing the Poor Pride 5 in a meaningful way. By way of example, I had a young man in first grade who knew our morning routine. The adult who normally opens the door for all the kids who come off the bus was not there that day and I was covering parent drop-off, so I was going back and forth. He realized we weren't quite there the whole time. He stood and held the door for all of his peers who got off the bus as a first grader. So I walked into his class, made a big deal out of it. His whole class clapped for him. He got the golden B-buck, got to come down and really get a prize and be recognized for that exemplary moment. We have continued with Bus of the Month. Much like EME, we do have the mailbox and bus bucks. One little wrinkle that you'll see in the photos is we actually have a magnet for our Bus of the Month that goes on the side of the bus. We do a photo with them and the kids who are on our Bus of the Month earn one of two possible prizes. Extra recess, when I can do it, is always popular. But during the colder months, when I can't be as sure that the weather's going to cooperate,[1708.02] I can't be as sure that the weather's going to cooperate, Ms. Phelan works with us to do cookie parties for our Bus of the Month, and that's been a pretty popular award as well. And obviously, one of the district initiatives is to improve attendance, so we've kind of combined our PBIS with our Character Ed this year, and we start talking about, to be involved, be here. So in November, we identified that as a month where it becomes difficult to make sure that kids are coming to school consistently, we noticed in our data that our numbers were down. So we told students early in the month that if anyone who got perfect attendance would get a special prize. We didn't tell them what it was, just that they were going to have an opportunity to earn a prize. That did result in us going from a 92% attendance rate for November in 2023 to 94.5, so a 2.5% roughly increase in attendance in November, which we were pretty proud of. And now I get to show you the fun part of this, you get to see photos of students doing cool stuff. In the upper left there, you will see breakfast that we have done the last couple of years, we call it the Friendsgiving Breakfast, we do it in November as our monthly reward. Every kid who brings down those tickets and redeems to get a prize from our prize drawer is also entered into a drawing, and we draw a couple kids from each grade, and we do bigger incentives, we've done pumpkin painting, the Friendsgiving is always super popular. You can see some other photos from different events up there as well. I mentioned the Bus of the Month earlier, if you look in the upper right, you can see the kids posed in front of their bus and the little red magnet in the background. You also can see a couple of pictures there from our Reading Lab that Mrs. Meznik talked about, you can see smiling faces, and kids with books, reading, happy about working with adults, and adults who are just as happy to be there. In the bottom middle there, that is a photo of our perfect attendance students from last month, and you can see it's a fairly large group, that's actually only one of the groups, we could not fit all of our perfect attendance kids in one photo, so we had to break it up into a couple of different grade levels. I want to close with a couple of additional data points, because we talked about being data-focused. The results of our PBIS over the last three years. Our referrals from September through the end of December are down 74% over the last three years, and when I just looked at bus referrals, because I keep that data separately, because not every bus referral becomes a formal in-the-system referral, those are down 80% in the last three years. So our PBIS seems to be working based on what the data is telling me, we'll continue to monitor for hotspots, but we're pretty proud of the progress that we've made, and we're proud to share that with all of you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Meznik to talk a little bit about the book vending machines.
So, very exciting. I believe it was last year or the year before, Dr. Bell had found a picture of a book vending machine, and he emailed that to Brett and I, and said, "Look how cool this is." And I went, "That was really neat, but where do you find a book vending machine?" You know, like, we just, we thought about it, and kind of went by the wayside until we went to Goshen on our site visit. So we walk into Goshen, and what is in the middle of the Goshen School, so as you walk in, book vending machines. So Brett and I, well, Brett worked with Dr. Wentworth from Goshen, and found out the contact information, and we reached out to Dr. Bell, Mr. Tim, "How do we, how do we get these?" They loved the idea, so they approved that each school could get a book vending machine, and we will stock them with books, and they come with little coins, and the students can earn a coin, and they put it in, they pick the book that they want, and it drops out just like a regular vending machine. So we're both going to tie that in with our PBIS programs. Very exciting. Yeah?
That's okay. So the picture on the left and the right, so, we weren't able to custom wrap these things. So in the middle, you see, those are just like the random wraps, but they told us we could custom wrap them. So ours is on the left, and HBE's is on the right, it was kind of neat that they were able to do that, so it's going to be, you know, you're going to walk in our, in our lobbies and see these custom-wrapped book vending machines. The other cool thing about the vending machines is that we order different trays, so you can have picture books as well, not just novel-sized books, which is kind of cool, obviously, so it's really going to be for, really for pre-K to 5. So that's kind of a neat idea as well. So yeah, and they, they get tokens, we can obviously open it back up and reuse the tokens, but it's going to work well with all of our incentive programs. A student, you know, gets a Poor Pride Award, or B-Bucks, and, "Hey, here's a token as well," you know, to go pick a book out. So, yeah, it's really cool, the fact that we were able to custom wrap them is really cool as well, so just wanted to share that with you.
And closing with getting books in the children's hands, you know, that's, that's an important thing, because kids love to have a book that belongs to them. They take it home, they're proud of it, they're going to be getting books from their vending machines, but also, we are now ready for our fourth year of our Reading Together program. This is so exciting, we look forward to it every year. This year, we have a committee of 25 staff members that will choose the book, we're in that process right now of choosing. Last year, we chose The Wild Robot, and then this year, because it came out as a movie, between Dr. Bell's support and our PTA's support, we were able to send all of our students in grades 1 through 5 to the movie theater in Matamoros, and they got to actually see the movie for the book that they all read together last spring. And we did this together with the, the grade levels from both schools. So our 1st grade from HBE went with the 1st grade from ASK, they met up at the movie theater, they saw the movie together, and we did this with all of the grade levels. So they worked together, they got to go on a field trip together, and then this year, for the fourth, fourth year in a row, we'll read the same book at the same time. So, so exciting, I'm so excited to share with you what they choose, when it's chosen. That brings us to the end of our presentation, so does anyone have any questions for the group?
I think the vending machine thing is, that is just awesome. And I don't know how the books are going to be reestablished, but I was just thinking, I bet the Marion Cooper Foundation would be more than happy to really keep that a close.
Great, thank you.
What was the free gift for perfect attendance?
We ended up doing a celebration involving many snacks and taco dough.
I didn't get my invitation, though.
Any other questions?
So we're hoping to roll out the new reading program by September, is that correct?
Yes.
We're in the process now of doing the purchasing, and then, and then have our training, we're looking to see if we can do it during the half-days in June. So that, because we do training during the year, you guarantee everybody can come in the summer, you can't guarantee everybody to make it, so we'd like to get all our ducks in a row, get all the materials here, so everybody can open them up, start looking at it all, go through the training, and then they can take them with them over the summer, if they want to fool around with it at home, try to get the hang of things, so we're trying to speed everything up, so we're good before they leave for summer.
Very good. Great job, everybody, thank you. Krista, did we have anybody? So we have no double comment, nobody signed up. Brings us to administrative reports, starting with Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joe Bell.
Okay, thank you. I have a lot of little tidbits of information to share with you. First of all, the digital yearbooks dating back to the early 1900s have had a real hit. We've had over 3,300 clicks of people opening up yearbooks to look at them. Last weekend, my Facebook feed was loaded with all kinds of pictures of people, both their own pictures, their parents, their grandparents, it was really neat, so shout out to James Decker, he was the one who came up with this idea and found the company, and just did a great job working with the company to get all the books up there. So now we'll be working on middle school and elementary school yearbooks, and getting those up there as well. You know, you move, you lose your book, it gets damaged, whatever the case is, your ex-girlfriend throws it out the window, whatever. So it's nice to have the digital yearbooks to replace those strange things that may happen. Secondly, strategic plan, we just started our strategic plan process, there's a thing called the Thought Exchange, which is a process online where people can go in and tell us about our strengths, and about the areas that we can work on and to improve. So I encourage everybody to, anybody who has a vested interest in the district, whether you're a parent, an employee, a community member, encourage you to go on in and share your input, because we'll be using, combining all that information and using it when we put together our intergalactic committee of like 60 people next month, to do the district-wide team for strategic planning. And there'll be teachers, support staff, parents, community reps, secondary students, board members, administrators, all on this team, that will be working to identify like our big overarching goals, and we'll do all that work in February, and then in the spring, we'll take those overarching goals and turn them into measurable, smart goals, and then have the staff write action plans, on how are we going to make these things happen. So please, we encourage everybody to give your input. And the Thought Exchange is open until January 31st. The new team name voting is going to happen this Thursday, Thursday morning, the kids in grades 4 through 12 will each get a email where they can vote for their choice from the eight finalists for the team nickname, and then on the K3 level, each class is going to vote, and the teacher will record that vote of what was the number-one vote-getter at that level. And that's Thursday morning. Power School, Power School, the parent company, which is huge, they're the biggest student information system around, actually got hacked over Christmas vacation, and they won't tell us, but we believe they actually paid a ransom to get everything back, because we did see no operation, no interruption in our operations. And also, our, a lot of times, what will happen is, if people can't get financial information, is what hackers love to get, they love to get their hands on financial information, like your social security number, all the credit card numbers, all that stuff, and when they don't get financial information, really the only thing they can do is try to hold, look for ransom. So we think what, what happened is Power School paid the, a third party, there's actually a third party called CyberSteward, who's a company who works with people who get hacked, and the hackers to broker a deal, to, so you talk about creative industries, and they actually go through the process on a video of where they delete everything that they stole, and then they get paid for it. So it's an interesting process, so, so Power School had to go through that over the holidays, and they notified us last week. Moving on to more interesting and positive things, we started intramural bowling last year, and then this year we added, and you might have seen some of the highlights on social media, we actually have boys' and girls' varsity bowling, and we haven't had those since either the late 80s or early 90s, so it's nice to have two more teams for kids. Tomorrow night, there's an informational meeting about the trap team, trap is, is a shooting, is a rifle, with the Rotten Gun, local Rotten Gun Club, Tri-State Rotten Gun Club. So kids that are into hunting and things like that, it's not a school team, but it's another avenue for kids to be involved in things, so that, and we've had quite a sign-up for that. And I had mentioned earlier that I started my visits to the four schools this week for my Student Advisory Council, and what that is, is I talk to the kids about what's going well in school, what might not be going well in school, what would they like to add, what would they like to see. So the principal is usually put together a nice big group of people who try to quiz me on all kinds of things, and they do, they ask me great questions. But that's going on this week, where I'm meeting with the kids in all four schools. And then finally, in case the public doesn't know, we've identified areas that are inside the East Main Street Attendance Zone, that we've now relabeled as HBE Attendance Areas. But what we're going to do is phase it in over time, we're allowing people that want to stay at East Main, they can stay if they want, and they would be grandfathered in, but their house, where they live, is no longer an East Main Street house, it becomes an, they're now in the HBE territory. So as those, that family leaves and someone else moves into that house, it will no longer be an East Main house, it'll be an HBE. Where we did that is, anywhere up 209 from the school, all the way up, so if you're in the town of Deer Park, you're now HBE, you're no longer East Main. But again, anybody who's at East Main now is grandfathered. They got a letter in the mail last month saying, "You can switch to HBE, or you can stay at East Main," but your house in the future will always be, will become a HBE. So, so everything here on 209 north of the campus, on Route 42, East Main used to go all the way up to Wilson Road, and now, East Main stops where We Transport and Post Offices. Everything going north towards Kahoonzie and Rio, that is all going to become HBE now. And then on 97, right before the split, with 97 and 42, Darrell Lane is off to the left, Darrell Lane up to the Hawks Nest, and all the ancillary side streets, they're no longer East Main, they are HBE. It's only about 50 kids right now, I was actually quite surprised how many houses don't have kids in, in those neighborhoods, but they are now HBE neighborhoods, so when new people move in, like starting next school year, they will, those new families will automatically go to HBE. So it'll take a few years, and we'll have a little bit of overlap of busing, but since the, most of the buses are coming to this campus, it's not a big deal to have some overlap on 209. And since the buses start at We Transport and Sparrow Bush, it's not a big deal to have a little overlap there. But eventually, what that'll do is, right now, we're just over 300 kids at HBE, and we're over 700 at EME. So this will allow a little bit of a balance shift to try to get the schools more in similar numbers, so. So those letters went out, a few families have, just a few, have taken us up on it, and have gone to see Emily for the tour, she's given her sales pitch to the families that are interested in switching to HBE. I think there's only about five or six kids out of about 50 that we invited to switch. So, so if you hear anything about attendance, no one is being forced to leave their elementary school, but they have the choice if they want to, and the next people to buy the house will go to the different school. And, oh, the other thing I had is, Phase 4, I just wanted to remind everybody, Phase 4 will start this summer, the bulk of the work is at HBE, and there'll also be roofing work done here at the high school, middle school campus. And then Phase 5, we're working on, we're getting ready, we'll bring Phase 5 to the borders in May. The swimming pool will not be included in Phase 5. Phase 5 will simply be air conditioning and roofing on this campus. We've hit our max for how much we can get aid on right now on this campus, but we will with Phase 5. We only have 43 million left to get aid on in this campus until either 2, in either 2028 or 2029, and then we'll have more new aid that we can do, because we'll be paying down there. So long story short, we don't have enough money to do everything we wanted to do down here, so we had to chunk it into two parts. So Phase 5 will be roof and air conditioning for this campus, but the addition for the pool and the athletic weight room and wrestling room will be put off to the future, because we don't have enough money for all that at this time. Oh, and the last thing I wanted to read, I promise it's the last thing, but there was, the whole experience of going with the football team up to Syracuse and playing in the Dome was unbelievable. And, and the Maine-Enwell Sports have a Facebook page, the parents', and, and they were so complimentary of our kids and our fans, and this one mom from Maine-Enwell said, "My boys have, my three boys have now played in six New York State championship games for Maine-Enwell." So I have been to six of the state championships, most of them we won, some of them we haven't, but I can say without a doubt, Porgeras and their fans were the most respectful of all six teams that I've seen my boys play against in the Dome. Congratulations, Porgeras, well done. So not only we kicked their butt, they were confident. That's all I got.
John, and forgive me, I don't know, remember exactly what you called it, that team with the guns, the shooting? I would imagine, at least for me, that's pretty controversial, and you said it's not a school team?
It's not a, what it is, is it's a club that is going to be run through the Tri-State Rotten Gun Club. Years ago, they used to have rifle teams that were actually competitive varsity teams. Jack Minnison Valley used to have a shooting range in the basement of one of their schools, the intermediate school. They had to get rid of it because they had lead balls, you know, you can imagine why they had to get rid of it, but, so, and what they do is, so the trapping now is, I think they shoot clays and things of that nature. So it's really a, it's a club that we're, it's a community club that we're helping them have a place to have the meeting, I mean, there's unpaid coaches who are, actually they have to be New York State licensed instructors, so, so it's not, it's not our team, it's, we're helping a community organization. It's kind of, think of it as like, if, if someone opened a nonprofit equestrian place in town, and they needed, and they needed some help, if they were a nonprofit, like Tri-State Rotten Gun is nonprofit, so it's not our team, it's, it's a quasi-
But we're supporting this.
We're helping organize it, yeah. Middle, I'm sorry, Minnison has one, and Monticello both, two of our neighborhood clubs.
Do they use real guns?
Yeah, they do.
Do they use real bullets?
Yes. Whatever kind of bullets you use to shoot clays and things of that nature, and you have to have your ear wear, your eye wear.
I'm sure they teach them, how to, you know, all of the safety and, and I think it's a double-edged sword for either side, but I just wanted to be clear, because I'm sure that we'll be asked about that.
Yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, so it's really weird, because it's a, there's a state association, it's not through the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, it's an outside agency, and so they, you know, they'll be called Porgeras, but they're not Porgeras School District Team.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, in my mind, it's a real double-edged sword. You know, I see the good in it, but I'm, I'm not a proponent of it, so that's fine with that.
It's amazing they're even allowed in New York State, you know, they don't let anybody have a gun in this state, so it's amazing.
All right, thank you, sir. That brings us to Dr. Natasha Walkowitz, Assistant Superintendent, for instruction.
Good evening, just a couple of things for, you can hear.
But we've got her right there.
I just feel like it's a load. We're preparing for upcoming February Superintendent's Conference Day, just a few things, our KE Buildings will receive their final professional learning experience for Leader and Meet, and our high school teachers, Emily had actually mentioned some of that in her presentation, and then our high school teachers will be receiving an overview of professional learning communities, otherwise known as PLC, and Brett and Sadie talked about that in their presentation. and then our high school teachers will be receiving an overview of professional learning communities, otherwise known as PLC, and Brad and Sadie talked about that in their presentation, and how we most effectively work as a team. So they're gonna get that pickoff training, some of our teachers went over the summer to get a real two day in-depth training on that, and so we're gonna carry it into the rest of our community here. We're also, as we're looking to adopt and implement the new reading and writing series into reading, as the elementary talked about today, we will have, I'm working with the company on organizing the half-day professional development for the spring and getting the purchase orders ready, so we can have all the materials and supplies, and then working into our budget curriculum writing, so that we have all our units planned out for our volunteers who typically take on the curriculum writing over the summer. And our professional learning committee will be reviewing this year and making recommendations for a three-year professional learning plan, and that includes our conference days, what happens on those days over a three-year period, and our extended learnings, so things that happen during the course of the school day, where we might be calling teachers for ongoing support. And the next meeting is scheduled for January twenty-first at three thirty PM in the high school library, so those folks who are on the professional learning committee will be sent, or they have actually calendar notice with an agenda to pack. Representatives from our district MTSS team will begin designing the MTSS portal and data dashboard in Power School. So we've been waiting a long time for this, we're so excited. Our first design meeting is scheduled for January twenty-first as well, for our district representatives from each building, and as well as Mike and myself and Keith. So thank you, Mike, for pushing that along for us, we've been waiting a long time. And Emily, Meznik, and I attended the New York State Literacy Initiative for pre-created three. So essentially, New York State, after last year, approved a regulation, it's called Regulation 818, to, and we have to certify a literacy review. So they came up with the first criteria for that literacy review, and it's only, right now, grade kindergarten through eighth grade. So as you remember, last year, we went through our own review process for literacy. It seems very similar to what we have to do now as a regulation. So we're gonna sit down, as soon as the ad test station comes out for Dr. Bell to sign off, we're gonna look at what those requirements are, so we can sit down as a team and answer all the questions. So it's a combination of checkboxes that we meet the requirements or not, or partially meet, and then with merit. So we're working with Dr. Bell on that, as well as our elementary team. They are anticipating expanding that to the rest of the grade levels, they don't know when, they can't give us really a timeline. However, they did set a date, because they're moving along, and they're gonna have a numeracy same review process. So our BIC team, which is the instructional council for the county, is gonna meet with the state on, in February, late February, to see what the numeracy standards are, and what they're gonna be evaluating, or asking us to evaluate within our own curriculum. So more to come. Last, our education committee meeting will be held January twenty-first at four fifteen, following the professional learning committee meeting at the high school library. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is John Timm, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Thank you. So Phases One, Two, and Three are in what we call the punch list stage, so the final items in each school has to get done. I was having a discussion with my wife about how frustrating it is dragging along, and she turned to me and said, "You have a whole punch list in this house." So we're continually pushing contractors, architects, and construction managers to complete these tasks. Our leverage as a district is that we withhold the last five percent payment towards them, and we do not have to pay that until we are one hundred percent satisfied. So it's taking longer than we expected, continuously pushing, but we do have about total for the project, three million dollars sitting out there. We're gonna draw a line in the sand, if they don't wanna finish, we'll find a way to get done, it'd probably be less expensive for us to find other ways to do this or do it now. So, just to give you an update with that. Budget-wise, after Phases One and Two, there, there is approximately three point nine million dollars, we are three point nine million dollars under budget, so that's a positive thing. So I'm kind of, we're talking with bond council and architects as to what, what do we do with this three point nine million? The first thing we do is borrow less money for Phases One and Two, just don't borrow that particular amount. Or what we could do is use these funds for future projects. We're considering using this money to complete the roof here at the high school and the middle school. So there's money from Phase Four that'll be used here, this money, this three point nine, would allow us to get this roof done this summer. So there's a lot of advantages to that. One of those is escalation costs. The longer we wait, prices increase, and it would be nice to get this done in one job, get it done this summer, not doing two phases and not have returns. So we gotta weigh out the options of borrowing tomorrow versus borrowing today, or saving on these escalation costs, but we're working that out. That's all I had this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Brings us to Tanya Durier, Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services.
Thank you. It really is our new year, when we think of our students with disabilities, and People Personnel Services, our annual review meetings for every student with a disability have begun. We are so grateful for all of the teachers who are attending, our general education teachers, our special education teachers, and our related service providers. And when I came here in 2022, one thing that we started doing was tracking parental participation and attendance, because it's very, very important for, for parents to hold, to be a part of those meetings, so we also hear those concerns. And one thing that we're finding when we look at the data is that our attendance of our parents in these meetings continues to increase each and every year, and that really is in part because of our teachers. Our teachers are being very creative, they are sending emails, they are having our students make invitations, come to my meeting, you know, two and three weeks before. And also, our teachers, particularly in the secondary schools, the middle school and high school, we are having all of our students attend those meetings, so they can advocate for themselves, so they can have a better understanding of, you know, their strengths, their weaknesses, their needs, their pathways, and transitional planning. And that is something new as well this year for our annual review meetings, our guidance counselors, because the federal indicator thirteen, which is transitional planning, we are going to be audited for that in September, and State Ed will be coming in to districts. So they went for training, our guidance counselors, to plan for students who are fifteen through twenty-two now, will they go into the world of work, will they go into vocational training, will they go into college or the armed forces, et cetera? But to have, start having those discussions documented in specific evaluations. So I just wanna, you know, send my gratitude for, for everyone involved in these meetings, showing up on time, we can have eight meetings a day, every sometimes forty-five minutes, start right at seven twenty-five, and go until almost three thirty, so we are very grateful. Secondly, yesterday we had an attendance meeting, you heard a lot about attendance from EME and HBE today, so that is a really big focus. Actually, last March, the comptroller, the audit and the budget committee of the State Ed released a report, and they had identified that in the state, it is a really complex issue with no real simple solution. We did start, actually, this was a great idea, and a request from Mrs. Cook, can we have an attendance committee at district-wide? So indeed, we did that. We've been meeting every two weeks, because with Power School, tracking our data and documenting that, we were meeting every two weeks. We had a meeting yesterday, and we really feel, again, ideas rule, people don't, a lot of ideas came out to make sure that we're documenting our attendance correctly, and we were able to shave with the help of, you know, the building principals, the paraprofessionals, Mike, Keith, Gene, we were able, able to shave and eliminate twenty-seven different attendance codes, and that's very, very important because we always talk about accurate data, and that's going to allow us to have that accurate data, because the state knows they wanna, they actually changed their number and their formula from ten to, to thirty, and they want the districts to do more, and they're trying to strategically, they have to give us resources, so it's, it's a little bit of, they have to give us a little more money, so they're saying, instead of having ten, we're going to move to thirty, so less districts qualify. So it's really important that we get our data and our attendance rates accurate. And as you heard from HB, I think Justin had indicated, that they've, they've seen this increase in their attendance, and at this data meeting, we do share the current trends and do comparisons and dive into the data of our attendance. The last thing I just wanna share with everyone is, we had our first sighting of State Ed in a district. On Friday last week, I met with directors throughout the county of the Seventeenth School District, and Monroe Woodbury shared that State Ed was in to do the audit, and I think I had highlighted that they're no longer going to do self-reviews, but they're coming in. So our regional associate that I've worked with from Sullivan, she works in Sullivan, Orange and Hockland County, Kathy St. Clair is actually retiring, and a new team is coming in. She said to districts, if there's any outstanding, you know, compliance issues with districts, you better get those in today. And Monroe had a new team come to visit them and go get their, their IEPs and their plans. And one thing they said to Monroe, and we've been talking about this here, and I'm so proud that we've been having these conversations, is, you know, you're kindergarten first and second grade, we want to have more students and they're lesser restricted in mainstream, in a co-teaching, and not in like eight-one-twos or six-one-one classes. So I just wanted to, to share that with everyone. And lastly, I just really wanna say thank you to Maria Meninsky, she took over for Lynette Davenport, and we know transporting thousands of kids, that's, that's a big responsibility, and not just to, you know, the middle school, the high school, EME or HB. We have a lot of students that go into added district placements in different counties with different schedules, and she really has made a seamless transition, and she's working very well with the diverse departments in the district, as well as the different buildings. So I just wanted to show my gratitude to her, she's done a great job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your reports. That brings us to consent agenda items. These items include Item A, Minutes, the Board of Education Meeting from December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Item B, Minutes, the CSE and CPSE Minutes. Item C, District Treasurer's Financial Report from November of two thousand twenty-four. Item D, the District Treasurer's Financial Report from December of two thousand twenty-four. And Item E, which was a grant, the Portervis Education Foundation Grant Funds to PJHS Character Education Program. May I have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda items?
Second.
Kathy, you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Personnel employment agenda items, which include Item A, Retirement, Support Staff, Position Thirty-seven, Teacher Eight. Item B, Retirement, Instructional Staff, Position One-One-Seven, Elementary Education Teacher. Item C, Retirement, Support Staff, Position Three-Eight-Eight, Cleaner. Item D, Resignation, Support Staff, Position Four-Four-Three, Clerk Typist. Item E, Resignation, Support Staff, Stipend, Position Internal Claims Auditor. Item F, Resignation, Support Staff, Position Four-Seven-Eight, Teacher Eight. Item G, Resignation, Support Staff, Position Five-Zero-Eight, Food Service Helper. Item H, Appointment, Vacancy Two-Six-Two-Two, Department Chairs, Grade Level Chairs, Co-Curricular and Coaching Appointments for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Item I, Appointment, Instructional Staff, Vacancy Two-Six-Five-Six, Position Three-Nine-One-Eight, Probationary School Psychologist. Item J, Appointment, Substitute Teachers for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Item K, Appointment, Support Staff Substitutes for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Item L, Appointment, Support Staff, Per Diem Payroll Clerk. Item M is an amendment to tenure eligibility date and tenure area. Item N, Increase of Hours, Support Staff, Position Four-Zero-One-Nine, Food Service Helper. Item O, Change in Status, Support Staff, Positions Four-Four-Two and Four-Zero-Eight-Three, Probationary to Permanent Status. May I have a motion and a second for the approval of the personnel employment agenda items?
Will.
Second.
Bill and Kathy, you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I just wanted to say congratulations to the three retirees, they'll be honored at the June board meeting. I also wanted to introduce everybody to Janelle Jones, our new school psychologist. Thirty-three years ago, I was a first-year teacher at Eldred in fifth grade, and Janelle was right down the hall in sixth grade at that time, and I haven't seen her since she left, and I left Eldred, so I didn't know it was her right away when she showed up at the end of the year. So welcome to board, you're gonna love it.
All right, action items. Item A, Capital Project, Allowances and Change Orders. May I have a motion and a second to bring to the floor?
Motion.
Second.
You, Kathy. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, Contract, Construction Management Services, Phase Four, Schoolhouse Construction Services. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor?
Second.
Mike and Joe, thank you.
And just for the audience, this is where we're going with a new construction management company for the new project, which we call Phase Four. So we have architects and construction management for Phases One, Two, and Three, we have different architects and construction managers for Phase Four, while the other people are still trying to finish up One, Two, and Three.
Any questions or discussions on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the Third Extension of Lease Between the Portervis Central School District and Catholic Charities of Orange, Sullivan, and Ulster Counties, may I have a motion and a second to bring to the floor?
Second.
I and Bill, thank you. Kathy. Any questions or discussions? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, Policy, Second and File Readings, Policy Numbers Six-Five-Five-Zero, Seven-Two-Two-Three, Seven-Four-One-Two, Seven-Five-Three-Six. Kathy, any input on that?
No, I think I, but all but last time, nobody asked questions.
Those were the ones from last meeting. Very good. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait a minute, you didn't have a-
I'm sorry, motion and a second. I had it myself.
Motion. Second.
Mike and Joe, thank you. Do we still, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Board member items, it brings us up to committee reports. First up, Bill is in ground committee, do we have anything on that?
Do you want me to?
Do you have the highlights yet?
Sure.
Michael, thanks. Short story.
We got it on January tenth, we're in person and virtual, we covered Phases One through Three, we talked about our finances, we're very happy to be under budget so far, so we have some money to move over for Phases Four, maybe Five. Phase Four, the designs have been submitted to the State Education Department, we're waiting for approvals there. We're getting ready to go work on roofs, ATRAC Systems, Pike Street, HBE, Two Line Complex, Armored One is working, there's still a few rooms that they're working on, we're moving forward with a solar field plant, which will hopefully help us eliminate a lot of our electric bills, which people will be happy about, working on the Verizon Booster, we're in the next phase, working with another set of contractors, lots of red tape hurdles for all of these little projects, it's amazing. Lots of red tape and hurdles for all of these little projects, it's amazing. One little project can turn into a six to twelve month process to, to just to help make things better. One for the, Mike Strick will be resurfacing the roof this summer. That is pretty much it and we'll be working on another meeting coming up.
Excellent, thank you. Bill Harris, D L T committee?
Nothing to report.
Nothing. Nothing to report. Dear Power Plays on Joe Andrea?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Board Jervis plays on Nancy Dunn?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Uh, education committee, you said the twenty-first of January? Anything from health and wellness? Anything to report? Michael, anything from NISPA?
Uh, nothing new at this time.
Excellent, nothing new at this time. Bill Harris, Hallie?
Yes, Orange County School Board Association will be meeting tomorrow night, will be meeting virtually. And tomorrow, we're going to have a special presentation by the Middletown, a large city school district. And the topic is a, it's a big topic, but Middletown is one of the only schools in our seventeen school region that has a cell use, cellphone use policy. So they're going to be meeting with us tomorrow night and discussing their policies. It's called Disconnect to Reconnect, Promoting Scholar Wellbeing Through a Cellphone-Free Policy. And I'm going to have Kristen send all board members and superintendents links to the meeting. You're all invited to partake in the meeting tomorrow night and see what's going on. So we can bring things back to our district to see where we're headed.
It's seven, yes.
Seven, it's seven o'clock. And it'll be virtual, I'll have the link sent to everyone else.
Great, thank you. Kathy, anything for policy?
We canceled last Tuesday's meeting, we'll meet again February fourth at Mr. Tim's office.
February fourth, thank you. And safety committee, any updates? No updates. Very good, thank you. Board member comments? Michael?
Um, I'd like to thank H B E and E Spain for the presentation tonight. It was very informative to hear what's going on, but we probably have a, uh, a meeting programs moving forward. I think that's going to be great that everybody's working together on that. Lots of good things happening, it's exciting to be along the ride.
Excellent, thank you. Judy? Nancy? Donovan?
Yeah, I just want, excuse me, I just want to thank everybody for the presentations also. I really appreciate, you know, you guys talking about the care and the focus and, and the involvement of so many people in the opening of E M E. I think it's easy for, you know, a lot of people that don't know any better, that, you know, just open a school building and tell everybody just to get started. There's a lot of things that have to be considered, you know, security and safety and, and schedules and all those things that, you know, to everybody else, I think it's taken for granted. So I thank you guys and all the teachers that are involved for the time that everybody took to, to do that. And also just, you know, for, for everybody, just the, the P P I S and, and the effect that it has. You know, I see, I knew about all the incentives at H B, I have kids that go to H B and I knew about it because they talk about it, because they're excited about it. And I know they're not the only ones, so thank you all for.
Great. Joe?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate something I said before about the yearbooks, the online service anyway. Not a single negative comment I've seen or, or heard. That's a very rare occasion. If you haven't been to the website, really got to go there. Nothing screams pork pride and being able to go back and see your relatives sixty, seventy years ago.
With head gosses and all.
Yeah. Red Raiders, yes.
I too just want to thank Jack Decker from I T for making that yearbooks possible. I mean, I've heard from people all up and down the East Coast that are so excited to see it themselves or their parents or even grandparents. So it was a great, great thing. Also, apparently Minisink Historical Society and the Port Jervis Free Library and many people in the community also helped him. So I wanted to, you know, publicly thank them as well. And a big thank you to Mr. Cancrini and Ms. Meznik and your I Ps for tonight's presentation. Things have really changed in the thirty years since my kids were in elementary, but it was great to hear all that we're able to offer to our kids. And I especially loved the way that you all got together to come up with a reading series. I've been here a long, long time and we've been screaming at Harvard, we wanted both of these buildings on the same page. And it's fantastic to see that you're both working together so well. So thank you.
Bill?
What Kathy said.
Excellent. Let's see, that brings us to dates to remember. Bill, can you walk us through those?
Sure. Wednesday, January fifteenth is the E M E P T A meeting, seven o'clock P M. In the cafeteria. Friday, January seventeenth, H B E P T A family night, it's a bingo night, five to seven at H B E. Monday, January twentieth, January twentieth will be closed, Martin Luther King Day, no school. Tuesday through Friday, January twenty-one through January twenty-four is Regents Week at the high school in various locations. Tuesday through Friday, January twenty-one through January twenty-four, E S F twenty twenty-five A D K Winter Ecology Trip is in Lake Placid, New York for the high school. Monday, January twenty-seventh, January is for journaling with A D A C. Two fifteen, Board Jervis High School Library. Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, there will be no school for the Lunar New Year. Monday through Friday, February third through February seventh, the middle school academic spirit week will be all day at the middle school. Thursday, February sixth, sophomore information night, six P M. In the high school auditorium. Friday, February seventh, the middle school Valentine, Valentine's Day dance, six to eight in the middle school gym. The E M E P T A Build-A-Bear in the E M E Cafetatorium, six to eight P M. And trimester two progress reports ends in all elementary schools. Monday, February tenth, Superintendent's Conference Day, all day for all buildings. Tuesday, February eleventh, H P E P T A meeting, six o'clock P M. At H B E. And that will be our next board of education meeting at seven P M. Right here in the high school.
Very good, that's enough. That's plenty to cover. Before we go to adjournment, that's about it, any final?
No.
Very good, thank you. Uh, that brings us to adjournment of our business meeting, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Time is eight nineteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.